I've got seven o'clock, so.
All right, let's do it.
Get this show on the road. Um, let's all do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm going to full screen. I can see everybody and I think we're good. Okay. I'm getting something about admitting people, but it's not showing up on my. Two people here. Here we go.
There you go, Mary Lou.
Oh, what is it, Butler? Oh, that's your, oh, that's your hundred thousand dollar shirt. Oh, wait a minute. Yours didn't go six years.
No, it was two hundred thousand. It was four years.
Well, ours was six years pharmacy. So that's a lot more than that, but.
Yeah.
That's worth it.
All right. Opening remarks. Um, Chief Solkowski, our Long Beach Chief of Police, is retiring on January the ninth after thirty-eight years of service to the town of Long Beach. For twenty-two of those years, he served as the police chief. We on the town council would like to thank him for all those years of dedicated service and wish him a long and happy retirement. I'd also like to present him with a plaque and a wallet with a wallet badge in it that says he's a former chief of police. Unfortunately, due to COVID, I can't do that tonight because the place that makes the plaques doesn't answer their phone, uh, probably because of COVID, uh, but we will get those to you, chief. Again, want to thank you for everything.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Spent a few scrapes together and I can assure you that he's going to enjoy his retirement.
Again, thanks. Uh, Bob will be replaced by Mark Swistick, who served on the Michigan City Police Department for twenty-eight years. Nine of those as the police chief. Uh, I want to take this opportunity to welcome Mark. We're looking forward to working with him for many years to come. Uh, please, when you see Mark around town, please welcome him. I know he's anxious to hear from the residents of Long Beach.
I just give him some, uh, bad news.
Oh, really? What's that?
One of our guys, another one of our guys tested positive. So it's going to be jumping right into doing street duty.
Oh dear. Um, I take it he's doing okay?
Oh, yeah, he'll be fine.
Good only hope. Okay. Um, unfinished business. Um, the town's executive order update. So we've had the, um, community center closed. Uh, at the last meeting, we decided we'd let the Y and perhaps, uh, Lori.
Laura Lysakowski.
Laura Lye, uh, opened up, uh, provided we were able to meet some conditions. Those were, we could develop negative pressure system in their rooms, limit them to five people, uh, at a time, and everybody has to wear masks all the time. Uh, I'm happy to report that the, uh, folks at the, in the, on the community center committee, uh, were able to set up a negative pressure system, uh, with some fans. Uh, I think they're set up in the Y and as far as I'm concerned, I think anytime the Y wants to reopen, they probably can. Just those fans need to be running and then they, of course, five, five total and everybody wears masks. So I'd like to make that as a motion.
I second it.
Any discussion?
Uh, I would like to say something. In the town center, we have a great dispatcher and, um, she comes in once a week and sprays after we're all gone. It doesn't hurt the paper or anything. She has the, and I would like her to do that in the, the courtyard of the town of the old school, if that's possible, because it, it helps. And she's very, it's Renee and she does that for us.
In the courtyard?
Well, not the courtyard, but where we walk in that inner circle.
Okay, for the walking around.
Yeah, and I just think it would help. It keeps everything down. And I assume that the bathrooms are still locked. If you have to go to the bathroom, you go to the Y or whoever and get your key.
Yep.
Okay.
And as far as, as far as the walking, um, we want to put some limits on how many people can walk.
Well, at, at six AM, there's only two of us.
Okay, so maybe people need to stay six feet apart, wear their masks? And do we need to put a limit on that or it's probably not going to be very many, right?
Well. I'm not, I mean, if you want me to, I could check in during the day, but like when I used to walk outside and the Y was open, I'd only see two cars in the parking lot and I'm serious. I'm being honest with you. I would, I've never seen, maybe last year, maybe three of us walk, but you don't walk side by side.
I think if you said four or five would be that, I've never seen more than four.
Yeah. No, they just don't, you know, people, it's, it's people when they get up, maybe two will come, then maybe a couple hours later, two more come. And if it was an issue, I, I, you know, we can look at it.
Okay. I'd say spread out as much as we can. That sounds fine to me.
How about spraying the, that part once a week? Have Renee do it.
Spray the, uh, the circle.
Yep.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Bill, were you able to do that?
I don't know if he's here yet.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That would, that would also benefit the people who are coming in to the Y and the, the, uh, yoga lady and everybody else, because we do have to have entrance if we're having the wire operating even with that limited capacity. So the more caution, the better.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so they're open. Um, I think, I think I saw that, uh, the lady from the Y was on this line and so she's aware.
Oh, good.
Um, forgotten her name already.
Lori Alaska.
Lori Alaska.
Lori, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Lori, when, when do you guys want to open? We might as well announce it tonight.
Uh, we probably would be opening next Monday. So what is it? Are we have to get our staff, uh, back in line and retrain? So what is Monday, the fourth, right?
It's like a plan. Okay, so.
Well, thank you guys.
That sounds good. Thanks, Lori. Appreciate it.
So Bob, before we leave that, I just want to tell you, when we got word that we might have an issue at the town center, uh, Bill and Deanna engaged, we couldn't find anybody to come in instantly. So Renee, uh, Googled it and she came in on a Saturday night and worked eight hours and cleaned, wiped everything down and learned the formula. So we have all the chemical, not chemicals, it's alcohol, but it doesn't ruin their paperwork on their desk and she cleaned the whole place. So hands, hands down, hands up to Renee.
Fantastic. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, the stormwater utility. Uh, we've got the first reading tonight of ordinance number twenty dash oh six, stormwater utility establishment. So Chris, does that have to be read in its entirety? Is that how we do this?
No, you could vote to suspend your rules and just read it by title and just first reading. You're not passing.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so all in favor of passing, um, on first reading, ordinance number twenty dash oh six, stormwater utility establishment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, so that passed. Uh, next is the first reading of ordinance number twenty dash oh seven, stormwater utility fees. So we probably ought to discuss that a little bit. Um, the idea being that, uh, we have issues with stormwater in town. Town's having difficulty in continuing to pay for the stormwater utility. Uh, what we'd like to do is establish a stormwater utility, takes money to do that so that we can fix the things that need to be fixed. We don't have puddles all over town, uh, and lose our cars in the puddles. Uh, also, we need to clear, uh, clear them. That's becoming more and more of a problem. The suggestion or what this, this ordinance says is that there will be a fifteen dollar per month surcharge on the water bill. Uh, I think we need to check, Chris, and see if that can be on the water bill or if it needs to be in the form of added to taxes. Um, I think there was some question as to if we could do it either way or not. Um, do you have anything on that?
I don't, but I'll make sure before your second reading, I'll make sure you guys have the info on that.
Yeah, I believe the, the, um, uh, the, the ordinance does discuss, uh, either the, either oh six or seven discusses it as part of the, uh, as part of the water bill. So at least for, you know, and I know Chris needs to check it to make sure it's okay, but for Carl Sender, who helped us with this, with these ordinances, that it could be put on the water bill as a, as an added fee.
Yeah.
So, so, but if, if that, you know, if we have to change that, we will, we'll change.
I will add that I, I know Mr. Sender has, you know, these are proposed and prepared and based on his experience. And so I certainly will have the answer, um, in terms of, or for your second reading. And these closely mirror what, uh, Mr. Sender has been involved with of helping other communities and, and mirror the ordinances that have been passed. So I, I would venture to guess where we are, but in terms of giving final approval, I'll make sure again that that's ready for your final or your second reading.
So all, hope, go ahead.
The one thing that we need to, uh, Carl is on vacation, Deanna's on vacation. Um, uh, we, we need to have a public hearing because we're setting up the stormwater utility and it, it would appear that it would be difficult to get all of the thing in the paper and have the public hearing at the January, uh, eleventh meeting, uh, to get the ten day notice that we need. So it may be that we've got to have a quickie meeting at some point in time, uh, sometime after January eleventh, but Zooming seems to organize people from all over the world to come in, uh, and, and, and meet. But I think, I think it's probably going to be, have to be noticed, uh, the week of the fourth, maybe, uh, the La Porte Herald doesn't have a paper on a, on a Monday, but maybe we could get it in on the fifth and we could, we could get the hearing announced ten days.
Yeah, we can check on that. I thought that if somebody told me, it might've been Carl told me that he was going to get it noticed. He may have already done that. Uh, I'm not sure. We'll check on that.
I'll, I'll talk to him. He's, he's very comfortable with the phone call, his cell phone. So I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Yeah, and Bill, my office can pinch it too. So if, if you need help shuffling that and getting it in, well, my assistant can help too.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor of, uh, passing, uh, the first reading of ordinance twenty dash oh seven, say aye.
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 Unanimous. To suspend the rules on that too, or the first?
Oh, yeah. Uh, I guess, yeah, I guess we need to.
Need to suspend the rules to do it by title only.
All right.
Who, who, wait a minute. Sorry. Who, um, who made the motion and who made the second on that?
We're going to start over.
We're going to start over.
Yeah, we're starting the motion.
Yeah, let's start over. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll make a motion to pass on first reading ordinance twenty dash oh seven, stormwater utility fees. Do I hear a second?
I second it. Mary Lou, Deanna.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we got it done. Okay, next on my agenda is the Lake Michigan Shoreline Preservation Overlay Zoning District Ordinance. Basically, what we have on the books now is an ordinance with two amendments. It's very confusing because of the amendments. Uh, the idea was to put that into one document so that it'd be less confusing for people who need to work with that ordinance. A few changes were made to, uh, count for basically a change in interpretation of how to determine the natural order, hey, watermark, watermark by the Army Corps of Engineers. So a change was made, uh, in that, uh, to try and basically make our ordinance coincide with their definition. Otherwise, I think the other changes were fairly minor and editorial, a few things, uh, some different, some fees were changed, I think, a little bit. Uh, just to make sure that the town has enough, uh, money to cover their costs in terms of, uh, basically, um, making sure that the ordinance is followed. Uh, did everybody get a chance to read it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, so any discussion?
Explain to me again about the coastal engineer. Um, we've got three approved, but that seems to have caused, or we have some issues with that.
Right.
Does this going to help anything out? Any, or is it going to make it easier to find a fourth or fifth?
Yeah, I spoke with Larry Wall today and he's going to get back to me on a list to, to add more coastal engineers to our town approved list. That's not actually part of the ordinance. I guess, I guess you could call it an appendix, although it's an appendix that's going to change depending on engineers retiring and coming into business, gaining experience with dealing with, uh, shore protection structures on the beach. But he had mentioned a fellow named John Doyle who does that kind of work. He was going to find me some other names too, but I think we've, we've got three on our list now and the thought is to add at least a couple more.
And John, also to clarify to the extent you're not aware that, I think in practice, and that's what, uh, necessitated some of these changes, the practicalities of, of getting through this process and complying and what, what we've learned despite what consultants originally suggested is in the state of Indiana, there, there isn't such.
There isn't any.
That's right. And so you experienced that on the building commission. So, and so that part of it, you know, essentially it's going to be approved engineers that have experience along the Great Lakes, right? And that's what we're looking for. So I do believe that it will greatly enhance the lift.
So the idea of this tonight is for us as the town council to approve sending it to the advisory plan commission. We aren't approving the ordinance. It's not going to become law. If we pass it, it will simply allow us to send it to advisory plan commission. They can take a look at it, decide if they think it's fine or if they want to make changes and then hopefully they send it back to us. That's how the process is supposed to work.
And I, and I also want to clarify that because there are statutory nuances and there are procedures to where the town council could initiate, which triggers some timeframes. And my understanding with this is essentially you're sending along a suggested form and, and as Dr. Lemay has communicated, I think to the APC members, that it's really to expedite because you have some new members who aren't familiar, et cetera. And, and so this is going to be a form of suggestion and based on additional research and practicalities to send to them and doing a lot of the, the legwork up front. And then the APC has decisions to make. And then if the council, I guess, not satisfied or is, or if it doesn't come back or some issues want to be made, you know, there are different avenues that can be taken, but what action is being proposed tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Lemay, is you're merely passing along a suggestion to the APC that you would like them to consider and, and take up formally.
Yeah, the idea is not to put the APC on the clock or ram it down their throat. It's to get the process, to the ball rolling.
I'd like to make a couple of quick comments too. It's got to be quite a cumbersome document with all the corrections from the various assorted versions that have been out there in the public domain, including the couple of amendments that Bob speaks of. So you know, you have to bounce back and forth between three documents to try to understand what the intent is and what, you know, it's just gotten to be an unwieldy animal. So my suggestion would be to the APC, if there's anybody listening this evening, that if they're going to make changes to the document that's out there now, which I guess I would consider to be a revised document, we need to have them itemized outside the document rather than changing a whole nother set of documents and having to force everybody to cull through another set of documents. It's, it's just gotten to be quite, it's so cumbersome now that it's almost impossible to understand it. So I'd like to see if anybody makes changes, if they would please itemize them on a separate sheet so that we can go back and, and find out where the changes are. Just deal with the changes rather than having to, you know, cull through all three documents again.
Yeah, and this, this consolidation of the documents and changes were made by Chris, John Wall and myself. Um, so do I hear a motion to send this to the APC?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, we got it. The two Johns made the motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right. So I will send a copy of this to everybody on the APC. So that they will have it. Okay, um, next is the sewers. There's been some discussion about that. Um, as far as it sounds like what we need is to have a formal commitment, um, to Michigan City Sanitary covering the design, construction and engineering. Um, it sounds like from the latest email I saw that Michigan City Sanitary was going to send something to the town and then we could agree to that. Uh, Chris, I think you were maybe included on that email. Is that your understanding too?
Yeah, and I just wanted to clear up confusion because I, I even think some of the correspondence from the state. This, this is really, even though it's Long Beach project, it's a Michigan City Sanitary District project. So from here on out, the heavy lifting is going to be done from, by the sanitary district with, so you, you did sum that up and you know, I, I think it's just incumbent upon us to make sure that we ask our questions and calendar out so that we make sure that we're on track and doing our part. But if, but if anything, there'll be things run by the town. You've already by virtue of the agreement, um, with the sanitary district agreed to cover the costs and out of pockets and, you know, going forward as this gets approved and the, the next engineering cost will be part of the loan. So this isn't the town's loan, right? You're guaranteeing it. So I, I just want to make sure that we're not freaking anybody out, that we're somehow missing or dropping the ball. I mean, we, we, we can give ourselves peace of mind by making sure that we stay informed and that they're communicating, but the town has done its part and we're on track.
Good deal. Okay, uh, new business. I did have one agenda item, uh, committee appointments. This is the end of the year and so a number of people on committees, uh, appointments ended, uh, in 2020. First one is the Board of Zoning Appeals. Um, and basically the Advisory Plan Commission, elects one of their members to be on the Board of Zoning Appeals and they, at their last meeting, um, nominated and elected Mike Gorman to basically continue there. Advisory Plan Commission, uh, Seth McCormick is a presidential appointment and I reappointed him to that position. However.
And Bob, how long are those appointments?
Four years.
I'm, I'm saying that again.
Four years.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, however, we as the town council need to replace Nick Meyer on that committee. I and Mary Lou are both on that committee. So that means that position has to be filled by one of the two Johns. Would either one of you like to be on the Advisory Plan Commission?
Not on your life.
What about we wait till we find the new town council person?
We could do that. Uh, would mean the APC would be short one. Chris, is that allowed?
Yeah, at some point you just have to replace it. So.
Okay.
I, I'm, my question is, there's going to be three members of the town council on this, on the APC? Is that a problem, Chris?
Statutorily, there has to be three members.
Right, we're, we're.
Statutorily.
Yeah, we're okay with the appointments and then where they come from. So in terms of how they have been.
Okay.
So.
So we don't have the, we don't have the process in place for Nick's replacement yet, so we're in danger of having, are they, what's, I forgot the numerical composition there. Without one of, an additional member of the town council, are they operating with an even number then?
Yes, they would be.
That's, that could be trouble. Um, you know, just in case there's some controversy that gets down to a split vote. Should we? I mean, I wouldn't, I'll, I'll do it for a while if that's, if that helps or John, if you want to do it for a while or however.
No, that's fine.
Can we do that, Chris?
Do we have any candidates to, for the replacement of Nick? Cause I haven't seen any. No one's told me about anybody.
There, there've been two, can't, two, I've asked for emails. Uh, I've gotten two.
Okay, who are they?
Uh, they are, um, Zach Neff.
Okay.
And Anita Remigius.
Okay.
And so if we could get more, that would be good.
Okay.
Uh, and then hopefully we can deal with that in January.
Okay.
Um, Chris, can we put somebody on the APC from the town council temporarily until?
Oh, I think you can name them. I, I temporarily, I, I don't think that's probably the case. I think you can have the understanding that if Mr. Wall doesn't intend to be on there, that he can resign pretty quickly. So.
I see, okay.
Forces the hand. So.
Well, the other thing is the APC has been meeting without Nick for several months and I don't see it's a problem. We haven't had any.
Hasn't been any. Of course, we haven't accomplished anything either for the last couple of months.
And I will say this, I, I don't think that you're going to have anything that's public hearing wise or that's before the APC. Anything that would come would have to go to a public hearing that's currently pending. So you might want to consider that. It's up to you. Um, obviously pleasure of what the council says.
Bob, that keeps it simple. I mean, I don't mind if John Wall's on there, but I, I think we'll find somebody in January.
This is Deanna. Other than your shoreline protection that you want to send to the APC, how long that'll sit? But also Bob, will you, Lemay, will you, um, give me a copy of all of these appointment things that you just read off?
Yeah, I can let you know. Uh, and in fact, I'm not done, so we'll, we'll, we'll keep, we'll keep going. Um, all right. So what's the pleasure of the council? Do we want to appoint somebody temporarily or do we want to just wait till next month?
Let's wait till next month.
Say wait.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I appreciate John volunteering, but I think we'll find something.
Okay. Um, okay, so that's what the APC is. We're going to wait. Police Commission. Uh, Mark Swistick will be replacing Chief Solkowski on there. Um, and then, um, Nick Meyer was also on the police commission. John, I think, John Coker, did I, I talked to you about replacing?
Yes.
Okay, and you said yes, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we're good on that. And that, that was also was a presidential appointment. Uh, Fire Commission, uh, Nick's was, Nick was the council person. However, okay, so this is a question for Chris because this is a little confusing. That fire commission has to have the fire chief on there and a council person. Can John Wall, who is already on that committee, serve both of those positions? And if that's the case, if John Wall is both the fire chief and the council person, can we just appoint a regular resident?
I did not know that offhand because what is the makeup? I, I do not think that's the case that you can, you can double dip there.
Yeah.
It still has the makeup of, it, it doesn't say you can have a regular citizen. And so the intent behind that is to have the chief and a council person.
So I've got it here.
Bob, aren't I on that? I'm on the fire commission too, aren't I? Yes.
I believe so. I hear it's fire commission. It's chief John Wall. Uh, then a member of the Long Beach Fire Department, John, Tom Yank, Yump. And then Nick Meyer was a council, which is a presidential appointment. Uh, another member of the council, which is a presidential appointment, and that is John Coker. And then, um, the fire commission decides who the fifth member is, and I believe right now that's Rick Luterbach. But I guess my question is if we've got John Wall serving a council person and a chief role, could the fire commission appoint two people, two, two regular residents? Or not? It's a little.
I do not think that's the case. I'm pulling it up right now, but.
It says in to include the fire chief, two members of the council appointed by the president, a member of the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department. a member of the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department appointed by the president, and a member selected by the four commission members, four fire commission members. That, that's what it says here. I assume that comes from the statute.
Yeah, I, a- and again, I don't, it, it, actually the statute doesn't matter ultimately because your ordinance controls. But it, it's supposed to be four members who are different and then an extra. So you, you're adding a town or a regular citizen, but it, it's saying two of whom shall be members of the town council appointed by the president. And then two who should be the pre, the chief and the president of the department.
Okay. So do we want to wait on this? So it sounds like you're saying we need another member of the council on that commission. And if that's the case, do we want to do the same thing we did before and wait till we have a fifth council member?
I think that's the right idea.
Okay, so we'll wait on that one. And then, uh, the last one is the Community Center Committee. Now, the Community Center is a little different, different kind of a committee because it's kind of more of a working committee. And basically they're just folks who get together and run that building and fix things frankly. So it requires a certain amount of, um, um, technical skill and how to basically run that building. They've done a great job. I think, um, you know, that's a building that's, we've really turned around in the last five years. Thanks to their work. The members of that committee are council appoint, pointees or council voted in by the council. However, the Community Center Committee has suggested Susan Keenan and Larry Brown to join their committee. They thought that would help them function. Far as I'm concerned with the job they've done, I'm okay with them making that choice and not forcing anybody else upon them, I guess would be the way to put it. Uh, they funk, they funk, yeah, they function really well.
Who's on their committee right now?
Uh, Community Center Committee is I know it's Joe Jogman. Doug Wickstrom, yep. And
Joy Schmidt.
Uh, I believe, yes, Joy Schmidt is on there too. I think that's it. What's that?
Bob Gallagher, is he on there too?
I don't believe so, but let me, let me find it. Uh, Mary Lombard was on there and so was Horace Bakowicz and they stepped down, though they still help out quite a bit.
Bob, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Joe.
Yes, Joe.
Yeah, Gallagher is on that committee.
Yep, there he is. Yep, so Joy Schmidt, Bob Gallagher, Joe Jogman and Doug Wickstrom. And so they had two people who stepped down, though they still help out, uh, but they'd like to replace them. So my feeling is, is, um, I'd like to nominate Susan Keenan and Larry Brown.
I second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
All right, Bob.
Yep.
While I'm, while I'm unmuted, uh, two things about the Community Center, which you guys talked about earlier. Number one, uh, which you and I discussed, that, uh, you talked about the why. And we said, you know, they could have five customers and, and the mask and, and the ventilation.
Yep.
But also, uh, I believe we talked about Laura Lee, the, the, uh, miss, uh, uh, yoga lady.
Right.
She, she wants to get started also.
Yep.
And we, and we will provide the ventilation for her also. So I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yep.
That she can start tomorrow if she so wishes.
Yeah, as long as we've got the ventilation, she meets the other, other criteria, we're good.
Okay. And then the second question I had was, you mentioned about walking around the building. And the only question I have is, uh, since we heard the Y is not going to be there until next Monday. And I thought, and you can clarify, uh, how are people accessing the building besides being Y members?
Yeah, they're not going to be able to get in until the Y is able to let them in.
Okay, so that's the policy.
Yep, yeah, because you gotta be able to get in the building and we want to keep it locked.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Appreciate all you do.
Did we get any ventilation for the hallway too or no?
No, you know, the hallways, you know, the big circle all the way around. Uh, I assume that the negative pressure in the two rooms that we've set up, the negative pressure will, will suck some air out of the hallways.
I, so John, Joe, uh, I think I, I would discuss that with Doug and Horst and but, uh, to answer a direct question, no, we haven't changed anything. So I don't, I wouldn't give a good answer whether that's accommodated or not. It's a good question, John.
Yeah, but I think people are gonna be pretty socially distanced walking around. So that's gonna be the plus, I think. So I'm, I'm okay with that. And I think we all, actually, we all voted for it. So I, I guess I'll, I'll hear tomorrow if the Community Center Committee has a big objection to that. But I think we're probably okay. Uh, next on the agenda under new business, uh, the 2019 State Audit Initiation. Bill, you want to address that?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce that, uh, we are, um, we have had an audit thrown at us. I thought we were done with, we had a four-year audit in 2019 for 2018, 17, 16 and 15, but we now have a 2020 audit for 2019. And, um, it just, it, uh, they would like it to be finished by the 15th, but I'm, I've told them that that may be difficult. The problem that we have is, uh, that it is more time consuming for us when they bring an auditor in. This is a virtual audit. When they bring an audit, an auditor in, we give them a box or a, or a set of boxes and they fish through the box, take out what they want, walk into the copier, make copies of it. But because it's a virtual audit, we have to do everything. And, uh, that just makes it considerably more cumbersome than, than when, uh, when we're doing it, uh, uh, when we're doing it with a, with an auditor there. So we're still trying. I just sent them something today. And again, Renee, who's getting good marks for her spring is also helping because Deanna, while she is here now, she is on vacation until the 4th of January. So it's me and all my year-end stuff and, uh, and, and the, and the audit. So it's just, there's nothing really that the council needs to do, but, um, uh, I just wanted people to be aware of it.
Okay.
I'm grumpier than normal. It's okay.
Anybody want to dare ask him a question?
No. Would there anybody, would there be any, any way we could get you some help, Bill? Like contract out with a bookkeeper or something like that? Come in and help or is it, doesn't help?
Yeah, the part, the problem is that, you know, a lot of this stuff is, you know, where is everything and how do you do everything? I mean, I, I, that would be lovely. If you want to find somebody who wants to do minutes, because we're still, I still got to the November minutes and, uh, and I can tell people if they're, want us to look on, you know, they can look on the ALCA website. And, uh, I've, I've started a little bit on the December minute, but we've got, I've got a bunch of year-end stuff too. So that's, that's something that's maybe something we can talk about in January, but, uh,
If I can speak though, I'm working on November minutes. Bill, you said you're working on December 4th.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying that there's
And helped Renee and showed her what to do to pull out everything for the audit. So because I know where everything is, I think we're okay on that part.
Yeah, it just, it's just, it's gonna be a little bit tight.
And anybody who's really interested, the, um, videotape of all of our meetings are on our website also.
Yeah, yeah.
And if we really get in a pinch, we can buy him from Marilyn Jones and then he doesn't have to do the minutes.
Well, actually, well, like I say, our, well, you're talking about her transcription.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be pretty cumbersome, but yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, if we get in a pinch and so that Bill's not grumpy.
Yep. Might be worth doing. We'll see.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, the 2021 Community Crossing Grant, uh, application for funds. Uh, we brought that up at the Budget and Finance Committee. We had some unknowns as far as what our revenues were going to be due to the COVID situation. We've gotten some of that information. A couple of members of the council wanted to revisit that. The app, the, the recommendation from the Budget and Finance Committee was due to the unknowns to hold off on applying for those funds. But that's just a recommendation. So I opened that up for discussion.
I just, may I add something? Uh, Pete Bibles and I are meeting tomorrow in socially distanced in the council room, uh, at 10 AM tomorrow and to look over that thing. Just for background, we did receive the, uh, normally it comes in about the 18th of December, but it did come in on the 23rd of December. And we got our tax receipts and it looks like it's about nine percent higher than 2019. But we were about 10% lower. So we've probably lost the, you could, you, from year to year, you can add, you can multiply last year's by 1.04 and that's what we were supposed to get. So we're about down about 4%. But we've got, you know, we've got significant losses on, we've got a hundred thousand dollars that we spent on, uh, on remediation for 21 and 23 earlier this year. And we, we had to spend, we only had $75,000 budgeted for stop 24 this year because we, so we had to pump it all into one year. And then we have, I still have, and so I, I don't want to be Ebenezer Scrooge, but I just feel like we're, we're, until we get a handle on this, my recommendation is, let's, let's not push too fast. Because we, uh, if you look at your, at your fees, the CCIIF fund is also called the cigarette fund. And that's always been over $50,000. And if you look at what it is today, it's $7,000. And, uh, the, we did get it, we also did get some, some money from today it arrived. But much less than normal, we got $18,000 from, uh, from Riverboat. And that's normally, we're getting a hundred thousand dollars a year. Obviously, we're, we're about $50,000 from, uh, from Riverboat. So we're gonna have significant expense in the community center because the Nippsco bill keeps coming in at $3,000 during the winter time. So I'm not telling you that we're out of money, but I just feel like it's an expensive proposition to do the, to do the CCMG. And, uh, I'd really like to get a handle on where we are before we start launching. I mean, I, I love the three for one as much as anybody. But, uh, the one becomes about 1.5 because we have to, we have to use an engineer to help us with that. And, uh, and all that means that, you know, if we, if we get $600,000, we gotta come up with, with $200,000 plus engineering costs. And we've got, you know, we've got, we've got some significant costs still. We still have a roof to pay for. Uh, we still have, we still have a fu- a front-end loader to pay for, uh, which would be about a hundred thousand dollars. Now spread over five years. But all of those issues, I'd, I'd really like to get a handle. And what we got before, we were kind of flush. And we're not quite so flush anymore.
Is that a three for one or four for one?
It's a three for one. It's, it's 75% for, for municipalities under 10,000. Uh, the bigger guys, it's 50/50, but the smaller guys like us, it's 75/25.
Yes, okay, so
If they, if they come up with, with, with 600,000, we have to come up with 200,000 plus, plus outside expenses. Uh, you know, if they come up with 400,000, you know, uh, 400,000, we gotta come up with, with a hundred and you know, 133,000. So, you know, plus expenses. So it's, it's still a wonderful deal, but I just think we have to be, have to be thoughtful about what our finances are before we, before we launch.
Bill, is there a deadline that we have to, that we have to make a commitment?
Yes, absolutely, Mary Lou, and that's one of the issues. I spoke to Haas today and he said that we do have, we would have the ability to do it if we, if we authorized it now. Uh, we're not gonna have that ability a month from now for this first call. And with the state's finances, I don't know that we can count on a second call. There traditionally has been two calls a year. Calls essentially are two disbursements. So you can apply twice typically in a year. Uh, Bill, if I'm understanding, and, and I don't expect you to have all your ducks in a row at this point, but you know, when we met with the budget and finance, you were concerned that we were gonna get less tax dollars, property tax dollars in by virtue of the COVID situation, everything else. I, you confused me a little bit with some of those numbers you were knocking around a few minutes ago. So did we, are you saying
We're down about 4%. Yeah.
Well, but you, you said we were up from 19 and then you said we were down. I'm, I'm a little confused.
No, we, we got 90% of spring in spring of 20. We got 109% of fall or winter in 2020. So we got back the money that, you know, people must have held off because the governor let them go till April, I mean, until August 15th instead of, uh, instead of May 10th. So we're not in bad shape in terms of the funds. But we spent a lot of money this year. And, um, you know, and I see, so it's not, so we, we're not in bad shape for receipts. But we've never spent this kind of money before, you know, we're, we really are. And I, you know, I see that, you know, I just don't see us coming out of the, the, uh, and maybe it's only another $40,000 that we're gonna, we're gonna spend on the community center, but it is $40,000 that we're gonna spend in utility costs. I mean, we never expended, intended the community center to be a, a profit center. But we had actually gotten to the point where we were actually make nearly breaking even with costs. But we're not and
Are we saying the community center utility costs are up 40 grand in one year?
It, we were, we're probably, no, but we're, but we were covering the expenses is what I'm trying to say. We were covering our expenses. Now our rents, our rents are next to nothing. And I, and so we were, I'm just saying that, no, we were covering our utility costs. Our utility costs are about $30,000 a year at the, uh, community center. And then maintenance is added to that.
And plus, John, we've lost Amy Shin. She's moved on. And who knows who else? And we haven't rented in, out any of the extra spaces.
Well, what we're talking about, uh, in terms of continuing, if we decided to continue the application process, we're talking about 35 to 40,000 dollars worth of engineering costs to apply for the money. We, we would not have to spend any of that money if we spent the 40,000 and decided we didn't have the funds to accept the million dollars or whatever they award us based on the application. We could choose to do a portion of that in the year coming up. So that's what's at stake in my mind right now. The expenditure for the engineering to make the application. Not the whole dollar amount. So that, just so we're clear, we're talking about spending 40,000 on the application process. As a cap.
Personally, I don't, I'd hate to see us lose. I don't want, I want to say free money because we have to put up the 25 percent or whatever it is. But if we don't do that and we don't have those funds, that means we'll have to cut up 100%. If these roads need, and of course the roads do need upgraded. And, uh, it's, it seems to me that we're being short sighted a bit on this. And I, I, I'm in favor of applying for this Community Crossings Grant and, and not lose the opportunity of getting the state.
But there's no guarantee that we're gonna lose, that, that there won't be, you know, you, you
Well, no guarantee there won't be, but, uh, what, I don't, why take the risk? I mean,
But take the, you know, I, it just, it, it's, it's not inexpensive. $40,000 you know, is, uh, it is, is a lot of money. And, uh, I'm not sure that we're, you know, that we're, we're gonna do that. Can we?
Half a million isn't a lot of money too, if we don't get any reimbursement from anybody. So
But if you look at, if you look at most communities, take a rest for a year after they've done a million dollars worth of paving. And if maybe
Bill, that, that's entirely not true. Uh, listen, let me, let me ask you this. In, in, you've got a budget finance In, in, you've got a Budget Finance Committee meeting coming up on the 6th. You've got your tax receipts in. By the 6th, can we have a good handle on where we're at on budget from last year and expenditures? I, I still, I'm, I'm not comfortable with some of the broad statements we're making this evening and, and some of the broad statements I've heard prior.
Well, I'm saying not.
No, hold on, I'm still speaking. We need more definitive information to make these executive decisions, Bill. We need detailed information about where the budgets were for last year and what we've expenditure, what we've expended to date. We, we can't make these broad, broad brush statements just aren't getting it done for me.
Well, that's fine, John, but, but what I'm fearful of is that somebody's going to vote tonight to spend this money and I don't think you have that information. You have just made your point. So your point is.
When, when are we going to, when are we going to get it, Bill?
Well, well, let's do it on the 6th then, but, and we can have a meeting and then we'll.
When, when is our, when is our drop dead date for applying for this money? I mean, how much time does Haas need to do whatever they have to do?
He, he told me this evening, they have not announced the specific date yet, but he thinks it's going to be the end of January. So, but keep in mind now, that means if you've ever looked at the documents, they've got to come up with detailed cost estimates for our streets. Now, Tom Dolphin and Matt from Haas have gone through the inventory already. They've done that work, but there is a, you know, there's a fair amount of work that needs to be done. And they're anticipating having multiple weeks in order to get that done. So I guess, you know, a year ago, Bill, we had a meeting with Sender prior to me coming on board. It had nothing to do with me coming on board, but we had a budget meeting. We had projections for the coming five or six years and some historical data about budgets and expenditures. I'm assuming we can do that now with where we stand now that you, you know, the big, the big question marks seem to be the taxes. Now that we've got those receipts in, can't we get a fairly good idea where we're at by the 6th? I know you're busy, but.
The, the problem is, you know, if you can, you know, you're telling me it's going to take, it's going to take, cost some time to put this thing together. And yet nobody has been able to tell me that we're going to get $30,000 every month from CAGIT and SETIT. And I mean, I'll talk to Sender and see whether he knows whether we're going to do that. That, that turns out to be $360,000 a year. Is that going to come in next, next year? And I don't think there's anybody here on this meeting who's going to be able to tell me whether that's it. Normally what we get is every mid-month, I get $14,000 for CAGIT, which goes into the general fund, and $16,000 for SETIT. That's a lot of money. Is it going to come in again in next year? I mean, I could talk to Carl and see what he, what he projects, but, but that, you know, that, that. So, you know, what you're asking for is you want a prediction and you're unhappy because I'm not able to do.
I'm not asking for a prediction, Bill. I'm asking for hard numbers on where we stand January 1 of 2021 on the prior year against budget. We ought to be able to say that. We ought to be able to say that in 2020, we had a budget of X, we spent Y, and here's where we sit. I just, I don't get that. Where, where is that information?
That, that information, you look at it every month. We've got, I send you that information. We're, we're within our budget numbers and everything. But what you're talking about is, is next year, 2021, and you want me, you want a prediction? And I'm not able to give you that. I, I, I don't know what's going to happen. I mean, doesn't, does $360,000 sound like a lot of money? I mean, if it's 240,000, that's, you know, that's, that's, that's a big difference. And I can't predict what, what we're going to get from the state. So I, I'm, I'm not telling that we can't come up with some numbers. But, you know, I was getting the feeling that you, you and John were going to, we're going to vote to say, let's spend $35,000 with Haas. And then if, you know, if, if we decide we don't have the money, ah, what the hell, we, you know, we spent $35,000, but it's a, it's a nice expenditure. I mean, I think the reason that we voted to not do anything at the last Budget and Finance Committee meeting is we're uncertain. And I, you know, maybe Pete will convince me that tomorrow, that we've got so much money that we, you know, that we're, we're flush for, for, for the CCMG. But I, I, I'm, I'm just not, I'm not there. I mean, you guys can vote, you guys can vote and I'll figure out where we're, you know, where to find the money.
Can we put this on the agenda for the next meeting? We've got a meeting.
Let's do, because then we'll be, we'll be better prepared.
And we, if we could.
If that's on the 11th, how much time does that give Haas? If we would agree to do that, what, two weeks?
John, what, what will we know in two weeks that we don't know now? Bill?
Well, we'll, we'll know, at least to give me tomorrow morning to at least see where we are with these, with the, you know, with the expenses that we've got and where we are with looking, looking towards the future. So. I mean, I bet, yeah, my attitude is, you know, I, I just, I, I just don't think it's a smart idea to, to go ahead with, with the Haas thing until, until we have a better handle on where our finances are. But, you know.
Well, we won't know where we at in finances unless we know where our expenditures were for the year and how we matched up with our budget.
We know that. We know that. We've got that, that, that information is, is available right now. So.
We'll have some projections.
How much did we end up with under budget then? I mean, how much, or did we go in the hole this year?
Uh, we.
On a cash basis?
We, we spent, we spent more than we took in, yes. But we, but we're, you know, the, the way it works is we have a, we have a surplus and we have a surplus in the funds. And we had to spend more than we, more than we took in. The way, the, the way it works is that we budget and we're allowed to budget for more than we are, more money than we are taking in. Because we've got, we had, we have about a, you know.
Yeah, but you can't be.
We've got over a million dollars.
You can't be living off your surplus because that goes away in time, sometimes quickly.
I guess that was my point.
Well, I mean.
We, we, we have.
Were we like 5% over, 10%?
We're within budget, but we've overspent our income.
By how much percentage?
So if we put this off till next, the next meeting, we'll have, you'll have met with Pete and we'll also have Carl Sender's input on projections for what's going to happen with these other sources of income, correct?
Right.
And that should be somewhat helpful.
And Bob, doesn't the Budget and Finance meet before we do?
No.
No, or no?
Budget and Finance, Budget and Finance is scheduled for January 6th, Mary Lou.
Okay. So they'll have Matt and then by the time we have the town meeting.
Uh, Budget and Finance is January 13th. Town Council is the 11th.
Oh, okay.
I had it on the 6th. Did we change that?
No, there's a mistake, there's a mistake that's been, that's been put on that we put on the original, original thing.
It's the second Wednesday, correct, Bill? Second Wednesday? Yeah.
They're after us, Bob, but.
Yep.
Let's, let's wait to hear what Pete says and Carl Sender. And I think then we can make an educated decision.
John, would that give Haas Engineering time to put this together if we decide to proceed?
I don't know.
Every year, at the beginning of every year, you're, you're guessing or projecting what income you're going to have. And there's no guarantee you're going to be projecting correctly every year. Not just this year. It's every year.
Yeah, this, this year with COVID, it kind of magnifies the potential downside though.
It does.
Well, that's what we said at the Budget and Finance before we got the tax receipts. Now that we have the tax receipts, we ought to be able to have a pretty good picture of this past year.
But we, Pete and I, long time ago, realized that the, the state budgeting is different than federal budgeting. If you budget for expenses, you, that money, if you don't spend it, that money stays in the individual funds. So we have been budgeting for more than we have revenue coming in. And typically, we don't spend it. But because of, because of the shoreline problems and everything else, we have had to spend money, just as John Coker mentioned, we have been spending our, our surplus. And so we stay within, we stay within the bounds of the, of the state rules because they allow us to budget for more than we're going to, than more than we're going to take in. But we're now at a situation where I'm just, you know, not sure what's, what's going to happen. But so we're, we're already, we're already eating into the surplus. Uh, we're going to, you know, we've, I've never been, I've never had to stroke the, the rainy day fund. It's never been huge, but it's $45,000. It will probably go down to about $10,000. Uh, because we have to, we have to, we have to pay for Stop 24 now. Now, we should be getting some money back in from coastal grants, but at this stage, until it, until it gets here, it's money that's promised. But, you know, and everybody can say it's a sure thing because they're not going to let us down. But I, I don't have any guarantee of that.
How much money do we get from coastal grants? Are we expecting?
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Uh, you know, I'll be the first one to say that if we don't have the money, we shouldn't do the community grants. I'll be the first one to line up on that line. But again, I, I would sure like to see, you know, when you send us our sheets, Bill, on the, on the revenue side, the budget column is always blank. In other words, we can't tell where we're at on receipts that we planned budget-wise for those accounts versus what, what we have in cash, which you do show.
But you do see, but you do see revenue in and expense out. That's on page two, usually on most of those.
Yeah, but just like any accrual business, that, that doesn't tell you the whole picture. You need to know where you're at on your budgeted receipts and then your actual receipts, just like you show us the actual expenses versus the budget expenses. And that's, I think, part of my frustration is I, I, I can't quite get my arms around where we're at budget-wise compared to where we are actual receipts and expenditures. That, that's all I'm asking for. I, I, it's confusing to me that we don't know that. Maybe you do and I just not see it or.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, you know, maybe we need a, a, a class because, because on the, on the page two, it says revenue in and expense out. And if you spent more in expense than you're taking in in revenue, then you are eating into surplus.
I'll entertain a motion.
Let's talk about it at the town council meeting in January. I make that motion.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Two to two. That didn't work.
Well, Bill's the tiebreaker, isn't he?
Yeah, I was going to say, actually, Bill is the tiebreaker.
Oh, he is.
I vote, I vote to speak at the, at the January 11th meeting.
Okay.
And you know what? Give him a chance. He'll come up with the numbers and I think you'll be happy.
I don't think so.
Oh, I mean, no, they'll be happy. They know the numbers. So.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Uh, public comments. Anybody have a public comment? Raise your hand. I'm not seeing any.
That's good.
Yeah. Council comments.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Claims approval, Bill.
17694 through 17767 totaling $140,702.15. Salaries for December 2020 were $73,395.1.
Do I hear a motion to approve those?
I make a motion to approve them.
Do I hear a second? I'll second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
There's three. Uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
I'll second that one. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Happy New Year, everybody.
Was that a three to one on the claims?
I believe it was three to an abstention.
Three with an abstention.
Who abstained, Bob?
I didn't, I didn't see John Wall do anything. John, did you abstain on that vote?
I don't care. Approve them. Make it four to.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Good night.